PM on Thursday, June 23rd, and we are at the Rockdale County Assembly Hall. And I would like to call the meeting of the zoning public hearing to order at this time. We do have a quorum, two out of three is a quorum, so there are two of us present. So we do have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second that motion. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The approval of the minutes would be the next item on the agenda.
I move to approve the minutes.
I second that motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the rules of procedure for the public hearings?
I believe they will play. Are they queued up?
All right. Thank you.
Each speaker must sign their name to the case sheet and fill out a public comment card to register their intent to speak.
Fill out a public comment card to register their intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda unless upon motion of the Planning Commission, the order is changed. A member of the city or county planning staff will present each item to the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission and will further provide a recommendation upon each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will state their name and address at the podium and will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. Prior to speaking upon the item, each registered speaker will state their name and address at the podium. They will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the Planning Commission, not the applicant or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the Planning Commission may elect to hold general discussion. The Planning Commission will vote upon a recommendation that will continue forward to the City of Conyers, City Council, or the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners' public hearings.
So Madam Vice Chair, I would like to make one clarification for the record before we get started this evening. This is a meeting of the Board of Commissioners. This is a public hearing on zoning in front of the Board of Commissioners and not the Planning Commission, although what you just heard, the procedures will be the same. However, this is the Board of Commissioners, and after the items are heard today, the Board can elect to hold discussion, and a vote on these items will not take place until July. Thank you.
Thank you. The next... We have no old or unfinished business, so the next item on the agenda is new business. And the first item under new business is 2660 Old Salem Road, Conyers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Madam Commissioner Williams. First item on to present tonight is 2660 Old Salem Road, rezoning case 2021-17. This is a request to rezone 54.49 acres from agricultural residential to collaborative residential subdivision to allow the development of a single-family detached subdivision with no more than 98 units. It's one parcel. Ashton, Atlanta Residential is the applicant. This requires two public hearings, one at the Planning Commission meeting and the one tonight, and a vote will be required for this item tonight. In summary, they are proposing a residential subdivision. Again, no more than 98 single-family detached lots. The minimum size has to be, can be, 10,000 square foot lots, and the minimum lot width will be 70 feet. Here we have a preliminary site plan layout for the particular development. The bottom of it is actually Old Salem. McCullough is up north, and so it's somewhat tilted, so north would be actually to the left, but it's showing the preliminary layout for the plus or minus 98 units. Next slide. We actually zoomed in on the site analysis, so you guys have a clear view of it, again showing the specifics. Trying to get a CRS zoning requires a density less than 3.1 units. They're at 1.78, so they've met that requirement. It also requires, again, 10,000 square foot lots, minimum conservation area, and making sure they stay out of any streams, buffers, or any environmental impediments. Next slide. Here's an area map to show where the red pin is the 2660 property location in the vicinity where we are downtown, and it's approximately a 10-minute drive. Next slide, please. And this is just another aerial to give you another perspective of this parcel. Again, it's Old Salem. It's a unique-shaped parcel on Old Salem, also down to McCullough. Next slide. All right, this slide here is the future land use, and it's showing that the entire parcel is medium-density residential for the future land use. Next slide. And the next one is showing the current zoning category, R1, single-family residential for the entire parcel. Recommendation: The Planning Commission voted to recommend denial for this particular item. Staff recommended approval with the following conditions. The rezoning site plan prepared by the applicant shall be the guiding layout and design. The actual location of water quality, stormwater, facilities, streets, sidewalks, et cetera, will be dependent upon the code of Rockdale County. The applicant provided a traffic impact study August of last year for this development. Any recommendations for improvements shall be required to be shown on a forthcoming LDP. Additionally, our Rockdale County Department of Transportation could require a new study, and any recommendations for improvements from any new studies has to be shown on the forthcoming preliminary plat and land disturbance permit. Next slide, please. Any covenants, conditions, and restrictions for this development shall include a clause to limit or to cap any rental development with that 5%, no more than 5%. And obviously, this development requires two access points, which the site plan did show one was going to be on Old Salem and one on McCullough. Next slide. Now, additional conditions based above and beyond staff's conditions are proposed by the applicant. Again, they're looking at no more than 98 homes. Based on CRS requirements, they could be 1,800 square feet, all 98 homes. Talking to the applicant in terms of diversifying their product, they want to do one-third of the homes between 1,800 and 2,000, another third to be between 2,000 and 2,300 square feet, and another third to be between 2,300 and 2,900 square feet. It says 27, but it's 2,900. Also, they want to have a mandatory HOA that will be responsible for oversight, upkeep, maintenance of the common areas, entrance areas, making sure they maintain the architectural design regulations, and again, repeating the rental cap at 5%. They will have an amenity area. They will use a variety of techniques to avoid a monotonous appearance of homes, so making sure there's some diversification in their product. The main entrance sign will be a ground-based monument style with the finished materials and color consistent with the architectural style of the community. In terms of construction, if this is able to go forward, they are agreeing to have construction limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, with no construction on Sunday. If for whatever reason there needs to be minor modifications to these conditions or the site plan that needs to be adjusted, they have to get approval from Planning and Development, so they can't just go off on their own to do something different without getting approval from staff first. Next slide. All right, this concludes the staff presentation. Unless you have any questions for myself, the applicant does have a few slides they would like to present.
Okay. We will go now to the presentation?
Yes.
By the applicant.
Thank you. Yeah. My name is Carl Westmore. My address is 3343 Peachtree Road, Atlanta. Representing Ashton, Atlanta, Mike Buscher with Ashton, Atlanta is also here this evening. Mr. Johnson did a very good job of describing what we've requested and also what your applicable regulations are. Ashton's done quite a few other developments in the Atlanta area. They are a builder-developer. They don't create lots and then sell them to builders. We, as you may know, this has been deferred for a period of time. We initially filed the application as CRS with 124 lots. It's been deferred as we have used the time to try to come up with something that we could reach agreement with the neighbors on, but as you'll hear in a minute from them, has not happened. But we did use that time to look at other classifications. We ultimately amended to come back with a plan with 98 lots, as you've heard. We suggested the conditions that Mr. Johnson had on the board a little while ago. We sent those to the neighborhood again. That was not sufficient to get them to support this. CRS allows us to provide, requires us to provide 30% open space and avoid any environmentally sensitive areas on the site. As you've heard, our density is 1.78 units per acre, which is consistent with the MDR classification, land use plan, and the traditional neighborhood character area. It is certainly less than the three per acre that otherwise would be allowed. Along Old Salem, the Old Salem neighborhood is zoned R3, others are R1, including the Oaks at Brentwood, which is adjacent, although as you may have noticed from the slides, that is, those lots are not R1 size. We have proposed, as you heard, conditions that would have house sizes a third at 1,800 to 2,000 square feet, a third 2,000 to 2,300, and a third 2,300 to 2,800. I believe the slide said 2,700, but that actually was not correct. We had suggested 2,800. Ashton estimates the sales prices for these houses to be from the high 300s into the 500,000, 1,000 range. Existing zoning, as you've heard, is R1, which has a 1,600 square foot minimum for houses, so we're substantially increasing that above what we could do in the existing zoning classification. In the existing classification, you could do 57 lots. We are asking for, as I said, 98. We understand the neighbors will tell you that that is too dense. They think it has too much of an impact on the infrastructure. There is, as you all are very well aware, I'm sure, a very tight housing market here that we're looking at just a handful more lot, sorry, 41 more lots in here, but 41 lots that would be subject to these conditions and including the increased house sizes as opposed to allowing 57 to be built without any conditions whatsoever. With that, let me reserve the balance of our time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Unless you have any other questions for the applicant, we can now move forward to the public comment. So if you have any questions for the applicant, we can...
I do not.
We have, okay. And we have several people that have signed up to speak. We have, let's see, like 13, 12 actually, all in opposition, so we can call them up one at a time.
Is there anybody that is pro?
No, they are all opposition.
So we'll start with the opposition.
Okay, so...
So they have 10, those 13 people have 10 minutes total.
Right. Yeah, they're aware of that.
That is correct. There's 10 minutes collectively.
10 minutes total. So if it's 13, that's less than a minute each.
Okay, so first individual is Mr. Patrick Fisher.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm Patrick Fisher. I live at 3209 Chadwick Court. It's in Conyers. It's one of the subdivisions, St. Remi-Wimwood, almost adjacent, not quite, but close to Ashton Woods' proposal. There was a traffic study done, and the study reports there'd be no significant increase in traffic at three different points, all 4,189 feet of it, adjacent to the proposed project. That's okay if you only go from those points to those points, but I think we really need to look at this at a macro level. On the east side of the county, there are only two major north-south routes, Highway 138 and Highway 162, Salem Road. The traffic on both routes, 138 and 162, has increased tremendously. In 2018, Rockdale motion identified several bottleneck intersections south of I-20 to include Salem Road. In 2019, the Atlanta's regional plan fact sheet identified the interchange of I-20 and Highway 138 and the connecting roads as inadequate to efficiently handle future traffic projections. Rockdale County is growing rapidly. This also includes Newton County, however, which borders on the eastern border. A lot of projects have been going up down that way, and how do those people get to work? They come up Salem Road. Hundreds of them, actually, if you look at it every day, they come up Salem Road, they come up Highway 138. This has created considerable congestion in the Salem Road, and of course, the big mess of Highway 138 and I-20. The same traffic is now migrating over to Old Salem Road, creating more traffic at all of these different intersections. This is only exasperated on the weekends when you've got the general populace attempting to run their errands, get something to eat, deliver their children to activities. These are times not reflected in the numbers and the statistics and the traffic studies for individual developments that are being planned. A wise, maybe a cynical person once said, "There are lies, there are damn lies, and then there are statistics." We are not statistics. We are individuals, we are couples, we are families trying to make a living in this community, and we're trying to make a future out of it. So we're asking you, don't agree to this. In fact, we're asking you to stop, and let's wait and see what report next year comes out as far as the regional and the new traffic studies and all of that. Thank you.
Next speaker is...
Hold on just a second. Let me make sure.
So, yes, Madam Vice Chair, now, if we could keep all of the noise to a minimum, the talking or clapping, that way we can make sure everyone is heard and we can get through the hearing appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Commissioners, the next speaker is Mr. Paul DeRoche.
Good evening. I'm Paul DeRoche. I live at 3204 Bed Circle, and here in Conyers, in the Gardens of Fieldstone. I'm going to be very brief. My discussion, my briefing to you is not just about the zoning of this particular piece of property, but it's about can we afford to build anymore in Rockdale County? So far, including this piece of property, I don't... What we've found is that your sewage treatment plant right now, I don't think can support this particular project, period, no matter how it's zoned. Right now, we estimate that the overall overhead in the sewage treatment plant, meaning how much extra processing power it has, is about 500,000 gallons a day. And right now, we've looked at that 500,000 gallons, and we said, okay, so how much can we build with that? And the answer was between 1,000 and 1,600 housing units. Apparently, on the books, you have 1,848 housing units that are approved. Of that 1,848, they've got a complete subdivision that I don't have the data for, so it's going to be in excess of 1,848, and your sewage treatment plant can't handle that, period. Also, there's a movement to close down two smaller plants, two smaller sewage treatment plants, and bring them into the sewage treatment plant off of Old Salem Road. That's not included in the amount of processing that's required to do with that particular plant, plus we don't have any information on the infiltration to the system, on several other subjects, and possible stressing of that plant. So right now, I have a recommendation for you. We have a recommendation for you, basically, that you can't build this plant, I mean, you can't build this subdivision, and there needs to be a moratorium put on future development right now before there's analysis done that can demonstrate that the capability to support whatever infrastructure you decide to build is in place. I could give you more information, but my time is limited, so I'm going to bail right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Tammy Schaller.
Hi. I'll speak very quickly. My name is Tammy Schaller. I live at 1119 Oxford Drive in Ansbrook. I've been the president of our HOA for 15 years. We bought our property in 2005. I did an open records request, found out multifamily, 764, townhouses, 455, plus a development on Flat Shoals across from Flat Shoals Elementary. Don't know how many units are in there. Single family, 629, plus Phase 1 at Abundale North, and I understand that property is 100 acres. And then there is Phase 2 at Underwood Crossing. I don't know how many units are in those two subdivisions. That total is 1,848 units. National average is 2.9 persons per house. That's 5,359 people. Two cars per person, that's 3,696 cars. Two children per person, 3,696 children in our school systems. Talked to the Board of Education representatives. They think in Rockdale County it's three students per household, so that's 5,544. I've had two conversations with a professional consultant. His emphasis is on education in schools. He says there's a definite concern with overcrowding right now with our current enrollment. He says it's imperative that we conduct an impact study on our schools. That process will take three to five years once we do the study, and with the current development, we, his professional opinion, we need three or four additional elementary schools, one additional middle school, and one additional high school. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Sonia Travis.
I'm going to defer my time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Next speaker is Mr. Kirkland Lofton.
Evening, Chairman. I appreciate you listening to us today. My concern basically is the children, the school system. The school systems are overcrowded. I've talked to some of the schools personally, and they said that they are overcrowded. I believe Flat Shoals was one, Salem was one, Memorial was another. And my concern is that all this building is going on, no one has a mention of a school being built. So where are the kids going to go? Where are the children going to go? So that's going to... And when people moved to Rockdale years ago, they moved here because they had a school system that was probably an A, B rating, and now the school system has dropped down to a C, D, and in some places, an F rating. So we need to fix what we have first before we decide to move on and empower more kids in the schools and everything to compromise our school system.
Next speaker is Ms. Kimberly Daly.
Good evening, Chairman. Coming here today, I was going to be very brief, but I'm going to try to see if I can speak clearly and quickly. My name is Kimberly Daly, and I reside at 2520 Meadow Miss Place, the southeast side of Conyers, and I've been there as a resident and homeowner in that same house for over 20 years. My professional background and expertise is in the law, insurance, financial investments, and believe it or not, real estate. I am a real estate broker. So with that being said, I know firsthand how important it is to have more than enough housing for all. The base family, the basic formula of Economics 101, supply and demand, is squeezing our buyers right now with the continual rise in interest rates to the point where they don't even know if they can see a light at the end of this tunnel. So you would think, why would I be opposed of this project if I know I need more housing? It's not that, it's just that the greed that's going on with the builders and sellers is destroying the industry. We have a constant inflation prices of going up and down, and then they're going to build these properties 1,800 to 2,700 square feet or 2,800 square feet, charging anywhere from high 300s to 500s. That is not going to be reasonable and affordable housing for what's coming right now. Right now, we have a 6.4 interest rate. So what's going to happen when they put these houses up and they can't sell them? We got to think, what are they going to do with them? They're more than likely, and I'm seeing it all over Gwinnett, as well as parts of Paulding County, they're building a new subdivision to rent them. The intent could be one way, but the builder's going to have to get out of it some way or another. So now we're going to have brand-new subdivisions projectedly where they're renting. How is that going to help us at all? It's not. The overcrowdiness, it's just not a good idea right now, not in that space. And another thing, I just want to read this. In this climate, it would be foolish to attempt to predict the future. But what we do know is anywhere from about 225,000 to 500,000 homeowners across the country are getting ready to face the possibility of foreclosure throughout the rest of the 2021 going into 2022 because of delinquency in their loan payments. COVID has hit a lot of people. People haven't paid. We're going to be facing the foreclosure, and now we're going to be facing potential renters of new construction. It's not a good idea, and I oppose it.
Final speaker, I guess, is Mr. or Ms. Lee Wright? 26 seconds.
Lee Wright, 3416 Uncle Gene's Gardens of Fieldstone. Traffic on Old Salem Road is horrendous already. To add more vehicles there is terrible. If you have two entrances to this subdivision, one's going to be on Old Salem, one's going to be on McCullough, the people are going to crowd on Salem Road, which is already terrible, or they're going to take Old Salem Road, which is already terrible, because we have too many people traveling both roads going to Newton County. And as far as the schools, like we say, the schools are already overcrowded. It's not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this concludes the time, the 10-minute time limit.
So the applicant has a balance of time if he would like to speak. Would you like to take your balance?
I'm glad that there was some agreement that we have a housing shortage. You hear a lot about infrastructure. I mean, as you all know, with regard to sewer capacity, if there's not capacity, we can't get a permit. I mean, that's how you control it. Schools are another issue, but if you were to look at it, as somebody said, on a macro level, what do you think is going to happen to Rockdale County? Are we going to stop growth? Are we not going to need more schools? Are we not going to need more houses? Are we not going to need to expand roads? There was a lot of talk as well about traffic. The traffic study that we did, it's in the record. It shows that if this is not built, as you may know, the traffic engineers do a no-build and a bill scenario to compare the two, and at each intersection that was studied of the four, there is absolutely no change in the level of service at any of those intersections, whether this is built or not. One final point, it sounds as if from some of the speakers that if you build anything else, it tips the county over into catastrophe. We're not talking about not building anything. You could build 57 houses now. The question is, would an additional 41 with the conditions we proposed be a benefit or not? It's certainly not enough to either solve a problem of not enough housing or exacerbate a problem of traffic. We think what we propose is consistent with your plan. Your staff has recommended approval, and we would certainly ask that you would find it consistent. it consistent with the plan, beneficial to the county, and vote to approve. Thank you.
Is that all? All we have?
Yes, that concludes the public comment portion. So the board may elect to hold discussion, or you can move to the next item.
So I had a question. It's currently zoned R1, is that right? So there wouldn't have to be any change at all?
Right.
Okay, but this request at the top says that it's agricultural residential. Is that an error?
That's an error. It's R1.
Okay. So collaborative residential then means, explain the difference of that and an R1 zoning.
The purpose of CRS, collaborative residential, is to create a distinct single-family development where natural resources are sensitive. It requires a minimum of 30% open space. Lots cannot be inside any floodplains, any wetlands, stream buffers, or any steep slopes. The maximum density for CRS is 3.14, and you could have 10,000-square-foot lots. And so in terms of the density, their proposal is at 1.7, so they're well under that. And you can also have homes at 1,800 square feet. And their proposal is looking at a third of homes being in that range, a third being 2,000 to 2,400, and then a third being 24 to 2,900.
2,800. What is the density with R1? You said it's 3-point-something for CRS.
Right.
What is the density for R1?
R1 is 1.4 units per acre.
Okay, and their proposal is 1.7.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
That's all?
Well... So I've done a little bit more research. I actually went up to Duluth to see the subdivision up there. Actually had looked. What I didn't see in your website or in Duluth was the comparable housing plan to what you're planning to bring to Rockdale County. My issue, I have several issues, and some of them don't necessarily have anything to do with the proposed development. A lot of them, what we're hearing the people say doesn't necessarily have to do with this development, but of the planning process in general, that they want to hear from the school board when we bring in another 100 units, to see if we're going to Flat Shoals Elementary School, how it's going to affect Flat Shoals Elementary School, how it's going to affect Salem, how it's going to affect what was that?
Memorial.
Memorial Middle School. They want to hear how that we do have a plan for sewage in the future. They want to see, they want to hear how, when we bring on new development, how we already have... I've always said it, it doesn't make sense to live in Conyers and have butt-cad traffic, but we live in Conyers and we have butt-cad traffic. So if we're here in Rockdale County, how it's putting another 100 units going to affect your quality of life? Because traffic is a quality-of-life issue. You are sitting in traffic when you could be at home with your children, you could be playing with KJ or your grandchildren, you could be doing other things, but you're sitting in your car because you had to go to the grocery store and get food for KJ. So what I hear the people saying is not necessarily that they don't want growth, because we can't stop, y'all, we can't stop growth. We can't do that because you die if you don't grow. But what they want to see is that we are taking consideration of all of these things when we are recommending approval, or when we're approving things to build and come into this community. The other thing is that we have a sense of, okay, this subdivision is going across from Brentwood, Ansbrook, St. Remy, and those are $500,000 houses. When you look at what is going to be across the street from it, if you're saying you're going to put $300,000 houses across the street from Ansbrook, St. Remy, Brentwood, those residents are going to be concerned because of their property values. So if we're... What I don't understand is why we're not, I guess, to the homeowner, why we're not getting the top of the line if you're building it across from one of our top-of-the-line subdivisions? Why all of them can't be $500,000 homes? Because that's what I think the people would be more inclined to hear, to support something like that that goes with the integrity of the neighborhood. But outside of that, they're talking to us. They're saying, let's clean up Old Salem Road. Let's get rid of the, all of the bad signs, the trash on the road. Let's clean up, let's sweep, not sweep, but mow the grass, or make sure that the other grass is clean, because when developers come to look at the area, they're going to look and they're going to see conditions that aren't necessarily us at our best, and they're not going to give us their best. They're not going to give us their top quality because they feel like they can't. So those are my comments. I would like to see something in the planning station, and I'm not calling for the M-word. I know Kalanis is getting nervous because he thinks I'm going to ask for the M-word. But what I do would like to see is so that when we are bringing in subdivisions, people know, people... I talked to the Board of Education. They're telling me that there's no, there will not be any impact on the schools. But if you all are hearing something different, we need to hear, we need to be able to show. We've talked to this person who is over this, and they have indicated that this is going to have this impact on the schools, and this is going to have this impact on the school. There's no reason why anybody should be able to come to a planning and zoning meeting, especially with the planning commission, who is volunteer people, and the planning and zoning commission doesn't know exactly what the impact on our sewer is going to be when we give the recommendation. So what I would like to see going forward, and I'm at the place where I don't think that until we get those things in order that we need to approve anything else, but until... I would like to see a more comprehensive plan, because then that's when the people will be better, when they'll be, they'll feel more comfortable about the developments when they're coming in here. They'll feel more comfortable about what we're doing, what we're bringing, the quality of the things that we're doing here in the county if those questions are asked on the front end. So those are my discussions.
So I... Interesting, because I took notes as everybody was speaking and the main points for concern, so that I can actually research them further. And the sewage treatment plant was one, and I've also heard that the schools are low on enrollment, so I wanted to check that out and see, you know, exactly what that is at those schools. You know, affordable housing, that's an interesting term. When... I'm not sure that $300,000 is ever considered affordable housing. But, you know, I think there's a whole lot that still needs to happen and more conversations that I would like to have before we vote on this.
Yes.
Couple of things. Tonight is just a, obviously not voting tonight. But the proposal is for a rezoning. Just because if they are granted the rezoning, vote up or vote down, you still have to go through LDP and a platting process, which will look at some of those intense, rigid calculations from DOT, water sewer, so on and so forth, stormwater.
Okay.
This is just a proposal, building permits. I think the applicant mentioned it in his presentation. So getting a rezoning doesn't necessarily mean they can start building in two weeks or a month from now. Never has a, I guess, in terms of a rezoning, having to get sewer capacity and so on and so... That's not part of... To get a building permit, you have to do that, but to get a rezoning, yeah. But, and another aspect in schools, we've heard some of the same things I think you both mentioned, even last year, we've heard about schools with the increase in townhomes and multifamily use here in the county. You know, diversity, housing options is needed. There is a lack of housing. I think there's like a six-month supply, which is on the books now. We've talked to schools, and a lot of the schools were under capacity, and, you know, so I'm not sure. So I've heard some of the things you guys have heard.
Well, I talked to the COO, but what I would... But the problem is, the builder has to know all of that, but it's the people that live here that are going to live across the street from the subdivision that are, is their concern. And if we change the zoning without being their concern, they're concerned. They're the ones that have elected us, so we have to address their concerns. It doesn't make sense to address their concerns after we approve it. They should be comfortable when we approve it. And that's what I'm saying, that yes, you have to, you have to get all of those things, but they are here on the front end saying that these are all of our concerns, and you all haven't addressed any of these concerns. And what you're saying, oh, well, those concerns are going to be addressed, but it's not going to be addressed until after we approve the zoning. You see?
So when is the vote scheduled for this?
July 12th.
Okay. So we have several weeks to continue to research.
You do, and even at your July 12th meeting, you can vote to defer it. You still have time to review this application.
Okay. So my comments are, though, the same for every application, for the next one, for
So Madam Vice Chair, I think I can help with that one. What we can do is work with the planning department to make sure they enhance the staff report and get the information that you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for this one? Any other further questions? We go to the next item.
Yes, please move on to the next. This is my first planning meeting, so I'm a little rusty.
Well, and I'll just ask if we want to pause for a moment. I know you were all here for this first item, so if you want us just to take just a little break, if you want to leave, but you're also welcome to stay. It's mighty fun, so, I mean, thank you all for coming out, though. Yes, ma'am.
Put what by design?
Organizations.
Organizations.
Okay, thank you. We'll just re-adjourn.
Ladies and gentlemen.
We're still in the middle of the public hearing. We were just going to allow you to...
Okay, you can call, email us, okay?
Thank you. Thank you all. Would you mind catching the door, maybe? If you don't mind? Thanks, Claire. All right, thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Everybody else who's here, you all must be the brave souls. I'm assuming everybody that is here would like to stay for the next items? Okay.
Okay. Next item, case number 2022-050-Sigman Road. This is a request to rezone from R1, single-family residential, to MRU, mixed residential use for a single-family attached development with no more than 171 lots. There are three parcels. They all total 65.07 acres. Applicant is Mr. Joe Gary. Two public hearings are required. We had one at the planning commission and one tonight, and one vote will be required. Summary, again, they're looking at 171 lot, single-family attached and detached subdivisions, single-family homes and townhomes. Looking at 128 single-family lots and 43 townhome units to make up the 171. The density is 2.6 units per acre, and they will have two access points. We have a preliminary layout, site plan for this particular development. We also zoomed in on that, the specifics.
Could we go back to that site plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Show, tell us what those streets are?
Yes, ma'am. You have one on Sigman and one on... It's Richmond. So you have one entrance on Richmond and one on Sigman Road, for the two entrances.
Okay, so which is Sigman Road?
Sigman is up top, the top corner, and Richmond is actually the middle left.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, we zoomed in on some of that specific data. Again, proposed zoning, plus or minus 65 acres, some of the material that I mentioned earlier. You also see the setbacks, 15, 10, and 20. Here we have just a location map. The red pen is indicating where this property is, off of Sigman, and from where we are, 908 Millstead, it's approximately a three-minute drive.
So which side of the interstate is that on? Is it on this side of the interstate?
Yes, ma'am. It's left of Conyers Middle School and Pine Street Elementary, so it's south of Sigman Road.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And we're here, we have another aerial showing the three parcels in question to give you another depiction of the three parcels. Next slide, please. In terms of future land use, they are all low-density, excuse me, medium-density residential for the particular proposal. Next slide. And current zoning, looking at R1, single-family residential. Recommendation, the planning commission voted to approve the proposal, and staff also recommended approval, but with the following conditions. Next slide. Site plan prepared by the applicant in March shall be the guiding layout and design. Location of water quality, amenities, streets, sidewalks, and other areas shall be consistent with the requirements of our code. The entire site shall be developed in compliance with the MRU zoning district, if adopted. The applicant shall provide a traffic impact study with the preliminary plat phase. Any recommendations for that shall be shown on the LDP phase. Also, R-DOT can also require a new study if need be, and any recommendations for improvements from any new studies also have to be on the LDP. We also have, as you see, the 5% rental cap for any development here. And the site shall be restricted not to exceed 171 units, with no more than 43 townhomes and permitted uses. And another caveat is all 128 single-family attached homes shall be constructed before the townhomes exceed 50%. So before they build half of the townhomes, they need to make sure all 128 single-family homes are constructed first. In terms of guest parking, we'll make sure we have adequate amount, 14 guest parking spaces. In terms of the two-car garage requirements for townhomes, that's a requirement. And the elevations shall be consistent with the exterior for all the townhomes, some materials, material, brick, stone. Again, that's something that's pretty standard for all our townhomes, for the exterior surfaces. And the final one, amenity areas, shall be included with the detailed features. Any structure shall be constructed... Any structure shall be constructed using building materials that are consistent with the surrounding residential structures. Next slide, please. On the final plat, and this is something, again, that's pretty standard. Every time you have a rezoning, this from one particular use to a new use, keep in mind that there are other uses surrounding that residential use that may cause noises. There's commercial, there's residential, schools. So basically, there will be a clause saying that the adjacent nearby non-residential uses do create noises and sounds that are commonly associated with those types of uses, and the residents of the community are fully aware of the existence of this prior to purchasing of their properties. Again, that's something that's pretty standard that we do here. And the existing interest on Sigmund Road and the pavement shall be utilized by and studied by our RDOT specifications, if need be. This concludes staff's portion of the presentation. Unless you have any questions, the applicant does have a few slides. Okay? Yes, sir. To the site plan. That, no, one more, two more, two more, that one. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Joe Gary and... Oh, Joe Gary, 586 South Keter Woods. I live in, just off the square in Marietta, so. The intent of, well, let me just say that I'm Joe Gary, and my wife and I actually own a real estate office in metro Atlanta. And what we do, we represent builders around the city. And we market for them and we also sit on site for them. And what I just, what I started doing recently, because land is so hard to find, is I go out every day and I look for land. And this piece came across, and it's a, it's a fantastic piece of property. It's on Sigmund Road. It's three miles, exactly three miles from I-20. The surrounding, if you look around it, there's two neighborhoods. There's one on Ridgeview Road, Ridgeview Drive, and that's where one of the entrances would be. And then the other is off Sigmund East. And so if you look at it, there's a few houses that would, that the houses that I have drawn on there would back up to those actual houses, but there's about 40% open space in this project. I think it requires 30%. It is, it's 2.6 homes per acre, and so it's considered low-medium density. I think it actually could go up to seven or eight, is that correct, on MRU? Okay. And, and, but the, the townhomes are at the very front. But the reason why I went with MRU is because of the, I tried the CRAs like Ashley Woods did, and it wasn't gonna work out as far as, I think it's out of the overlay, the, I think that was Sigmund Road overlay, so I couldn't do that. But I tried different ways, and MRU is the best case for it. And the lots have to be a minimum of 6,000 square feet, or they, they don't have to be that large, but most of them are 6,000 square feet or larger. But there's a, there's a lot of privacy throughout those homes, as you see on the, on the layout there. But the, as far as, I know the big concern with the commission and also with the residences here is schools and the capacity of schools and that sort of thing. And so this week I did call, I called each school, and the schools that, that are in this area, Pine Street Elementary, Conyers Middle, and Rockdale High. And so when I called Pine Street, I, I talked to one of the people there, I think it was the person up front, and they said they would refer me to Rockdale Board of Education, Rockdale Schools. Conyers Middle, I actually talked to somebody there, and they told me about the trailers and that sort of thing, and I'll go into that in just a second. And when I called Rockdale High, they referred me to the principal. The principal actually called the Rockdale County Board of Education, and he called me yesterday, which I thought was fantastic. Instead of me having to call, they called me. And so he gave me the actual capacity for each school. He gave me the projected, projection of how many students you'll have in each school, and he gave me the actual numbers for 2021. So not to be mundane or anything, but I'm gonna go over this with you. So Pine Street, the capacity's 918. The projected was 688. The actual was 631. So there's plenty of room for growth in Pine Street. Conyers Middle, the capacity is 1,200. The projected was 1099. The actual was 1,004. So there's roughly 200 there, so there's room there. I asked about the four trailers, and they said they issued the four trailers because of, it happened during the COVID stuff, and I think they used it really for social distancing. But when I talked to them, it's used for connection classes. I don't know what connection classes are, but it's not for the main core subjects.
Connection, connection classes, are there extra classes?
Okay.
Like band or orchestra?
Okay.
Art or?
Okay, okay, thank you. And, but they're not used for the core subjects, so there's plenty of room for that school, too. And this was really astonishing. So when I asked about Rockdale County, the capacity is 2,000. The projected, projection was 1,974. The actual was only 1,420. And evidently, because of this new age and everything with COVID and all that, and learning from home, I think a lot of students are not enrolled anymore. So there's, and you know, I mean, going forward, it is gonna be more pressure and more pressure, but I really think that, I mean, it's obvious here, there's plenty of room there also. If you look online, it showed a steady but very low growth to Rockdale County High, and I'll just give you an idea there, in 2016, it was 2121. And this is based off of, I guess, their records, what, whatever this online search was. And it's not accurate, like, actual things. Going all the way to 2021, which was 2,203. So there was a big, I mean, there's, there's hardly any growth whatsoever that it shows. So what my plan is, is we sell to, what we're gonna do is approach other builders that we work with. We work with about 12 different builders, and we're gonna approach them about this land. And, but the whole idea was for me to, I have to get it zoned in order to do that. And it's, it's such a perfect piece of property because as far as traffic goes, they're widening all of Sigmund right there, and by the time they will start building or more finished building, Sigmund will be widened by that time and all the way to 20. So there's, it shouldn't be an impact at all on the traffic. Oh, and then the other thing, too, is we're, there's 65 acres, and there, if you look at the top portion, that is Sigmund Road right there. So to the right, we're deeding back 1.99, roughly two acres, that goes through the flood zone. So we're deeding that back to the county, and I think it's gonna be a park or walkway or something. Yeah, okay. But, you know, the, the other reason for the MRU was there cannot be any part of the lots in the floodplain. And as you can see, there's quite a bit of floodplain going through there, and so that's why there's so much open space. You know, I hope you approve it, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Well, first, can I? No, I don't have, I would like to thank you so much for all the research, the, with the schools and doing all of that, taking the time to, to, to research, like I said, some of the concerns of the citizens, especially, that's near my house, so I'm very concerned about development that goes on there. But my questions are, the amenities, what kind of amenities are you all trying?
So we're not gonna do amenities in the subdivision, and there's really no space for them. So, you know, it's, it's, it's up to the builder, but right now, there, we don't show any amenities in the subdivision. I mean, there is a lake or pond back there that's on the property, and there is gonna be that 1.99 that we're deeding back, so.
Okay. Any other, any questions, not doing?
As far, let me, I'll say this, too. As far as pricing goes, what we're looking for is low threes to the low fours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this concludes the applicant's portion of the presentation. Unless you have any other questions for myself, we can now start the public comment, hearing portion of the presentation. We only have one individual that has signed up, and they're in opposition.
So nobody for it? Then we'll move on to opposition.
Okay. The one individual to sign up is Mr. Steve Manlo?
Marlo.
Marlo, apologize, sir.
Can we get that?
Same layout.
Okay, thank you. Basically, my property, that I own for 30 years, 32 years, is in that L-shaped area that goes down to the lake, from the lake up and up to that little point right there that's, that actually road. What he's doing with this property is he's taking away my, my access to my back property. I got two lots, one for my house and one for the back lot. I have a fence that I've always had the right-of-way, and I have two main gates. It's been there before I even moved there. The fence was built, but the gate was there. And by doing that, he's taking away my rights as far as gaining access to my back property. And from going from zero housing or backyard neighbors to nine backyard neighbors is what I'm faced with right there, with no access to my back, back lot, no easement showed on that, on that lot, and I had easement before. And so I, I don't think it's right that I have to spend money out of my pocket to redo my property, and I still lose the access to my back easement, to my back property that goes to the lake. And that's why I'm opposed. And, and going from R1 to the smaller houses that they've got, the smaller lots, that's the reason why I'm gonna have nine backyard neighbors, you know, on that property right there. I've been a citizen of Rockdale since 1989, and I'm still over on Christian Circle, still in Rockdale. And, but I was planning on moving back in that house, downsized, and then I got this coming up. And so I can't get the, you know, it's totally different, you know? I've had woods all my life back there, raised my family out of there, and now I've got this big subdivision. There's no undisturbed buffer on my property. If you look all the way around, the whole lots, you got undisturbed buffer due to the wetlands. But right there, you back up right against all the houses right there in that area with a different zoning. And it's kinda odd, the last board the other week said they didn't want to have townhouses in this, and now they're still talking about townhouses. That's the reason why they approved it, to get away from the townhouses. And now they're still talking about townhouses, so I don't understand the, that option right there. Reason why y'all haven't changed it, or, or are you going to change it?
They, they approved it last week.
With the option of getting away from the townhouses.
I'm sorry. You need to address the, the board.
Yeah, but that's what I, that's what I heard, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, you know, I'm done. Thank you.
So this concludes, that's the only speaker that signed up. That concludes the public comment portion of the hearing. I think Mr. Gary's time is up, so you guys can have some discussion, or we can move to the third item.
I appreciated all the information about the schools. I understand the frustration with the homeowner also. I, I'm curious, as he said he has access to the back part of his property, I wonder who granted that right-of-way to that back property?
If he has an easement, it should continue, so, I mean.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that that, that wouldn't change.
It shouldn't, yeah, easements are typically, they run with the land regardless of ownership and so.
If you look at the old plots, it shows a road going right beside my house. And there were plots that had 30 years ago on its purpose, right? And it used to have a road going through there, and there was a lake ball field that was to the left of that road. And it's grown up over the years, road went all the way up the left.
So, so I, I think what I would like to know is just a little bit more about that.
About the easement, yes.
Yes.
We can do some research on that, yes, ma'am.
Well, you, you all know my, I've always been a big advocate for quality of life and amenities. I think that when somebody comes home, they should be able to, to come home to a certain standard of living. And I've been consistent with that request for amenities if we're gonna change zoning. So I would like a consideration of, for some amenities in this project. I think those are my only comments outside of what I've already said.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and there was a comment about the county doing paths, deeding part of that land to the county to put trails or something in.
As, he was considering some of the property, deeding it back to the county. And that's something that if we're to go forward, he considered doing that, almost two acres, 1.9 acres, deeded to the county, and obviously we have to go through some legal coordination with that, or something for passive recreation or some sorts. And so that was just one of his recommendations he's considering doing as a part of his development.
So one of the problems that I've found that is rampant in Rockdale County is children that live in communities that don't have, like, swimming or, or other recreation. They're jumping fences to get into the pools of, of communities that do have the swimming, and, and the, the homeowners associations, they're having to pay people to guard these, you know, guard the pools from the children that don't live there. So one of the, the things that I would like to see is some kind of pool amenity or something to, because if you live in a community with a pool, you're not jumping the fence to get to other people's pools. So that would be one amenity I would like to kinda see moving forward. Walking trails, something. I, I want people, when they go home, they're not just going to a subdivision that looks like generic, Generica. I would like for the subdivisions to look individual, so that you come home, if you wanna take a walk, if you're trying to get off that COVID-20, you can walk your COVID, your trails. If you're trying, once again, the, the whole thing about the children with the pools and things like that. I think the way that we curtail some of that is that we are asking the people that come into the, to this community, and they're part of the solution, rather than part of the problem. That's all I have, right now.
So you'd like to see consideration for some amenities?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's something that the applicant, I'm sure, will consider? So again, we have a few weeks before the actual vote, so, with the other research that you've tasked us with, so we can definitely coordinate with him on that, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion points by the board?
No.
Next item, please. All right, this item here is future land use case 2022 dash 03 and a rezoning case 2022 dash 06, 0 Miller Chapel Road. This item was supported by both the, staff supported this item, approved it, but the Planning Commission did not, not because it was a bad project. There was some confusion on behalf... There was some confusion on behalf of the applicant for this particular project. It's a self-storage, self-storage unit facility on Miller's Chapel, and the dimensions of it, the floor spacing exceeded what's in our code. And so instead of 15,000 max per floor, they had something that would come out to 112,000, which was much too large, should have been 53 and 54, because of the confusion with that. And that's one thing. The second thing is that this is the last parcel in unincorporated Rockdale. The rest of this property along Miller's Chapel is in the city. The city has an overlay, so there are some issues with fencing, landscaping, streetscaping that they would like this applicant to coordinate with as well. So the applicant didn't have a quick turnaround because of the size of the facility proposal was out of scale, as well as the information he received from the city. They wanted more time to go back to the drawing board, and what they want to do is to go back through in August. So if they want, no presentation tonight, but just wanted to explain why the denial by the PC, so they can actually go back to the drawing board and have a self-storage that's in proper scale, as well as have proper coordination with the city of Conyers with streetscapes, fencing, and some other amenities for their overlay.
So is that located?
It's right beside United Bank, yes, ma'am. If you go 138, make a right on Miller's Chapel, United Bank's on the corner, it's the four-acre site that's adjacent to...
Okay, so it's between the thing?
Right there, right there.
And the new...
Yes, that's the last parcel.
...outting that's going in, in the city.
Yes, ma'am. Everything south of that parcel, that's highlighted, is in the city of Conyers. Obviously, everything across the street's in the city. That last parcel and United Bank is on the corner, United Community Bank is on the corner, is in unincorporated Rockdale. And so a couple of things, again, building out of scale, and want to coordinate more with the overlay to be, yes, ma'am.
So, and I know we're not having a discussion, but you're saying that that's, that, that whole subdivision, that's supposed to be a very high-end subdivision, it's supposed to be very land well-kept, they're doing, they have an overlay district for it. With all of that coming in, all of the needs that we have in this community, we can't, they can't think of something outside of a, a storage facility to bring to this community? I mean, and especially if they want us to rezonate commercial.
Well, it's OI now, C2. They were looking at something that would look like an office in terms of the exterior facade. They were going to reserve maybe 10 to 12% of it for office as well. Based on the schematics that they brought, it was definitely a nice-looking facility, but it was just out of scale based on the proposal.
Okay. We'll talk about it more when they bring it back, but I, I, I just think that we have so many needs in this community, restaurants, retail, all kinds of things, that this, this subdivision is key to bring, to, for, to feed into any of that. And I just don't necessarily want to...
We'll talk about it later.
Yes, ma'am. And hence the reason they want to go back to the drawing board for the August PC meeting, so there will be no presentation tonight. Someone explain to you the, the denial and the applicant's stance, so...
Thank you. So that is the last item.
That's the last item. Any questions, any other additional comments regarding this item?
And the planning commission minutes are attached in your packet, which you have, so we have no other items, and that is, that's it?
Well, if all hearts and minds are clear, we will adjourn at 7:15. Thank you.